All right, good evening, everyone. I call the City Council Committee of the Whole meeting for May 19th to order. At this time, thinking about hopefully peace in the Middle East, let's have a moment of silence, please. Alderman Ambrose, if you'd please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Brian, if you'd please call the role for tonight. Dunn.
Here.
Dorman.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Gripp.
Here.
Condon.
Here.
Dickman.
Here.
Jobchin.
Here.
And Ambrose.
Sir. Nine present, Your Honor.
Thank you, Brian. So again, good evening, everyone, as we begin the meeting of the City Council Committee of the Whole. Again, like to welcome everybody in attendance and those who are viewing the meeting throughout respective mobile or computer devices. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions. Please keep in mind, though, as you talk to the council, you're sharing your thoughts with your fellow Davenporters and folks throughout the region. We're happy you're participating in your city government and ask that your participation please reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport a great place for everyone. At this time, if you have a cellphone, especially folks in here, if you put it on silent or turn it off just simply so it doesn't get in the way of people talking. If you have a particular item you want to address, please come to the podium here. The microphone's above you, and you're encouraged to do so during the standing committees. You also have an opportunity to address the council at the end under Public Business. You'll have five minutes, same thing, podium, microphone. Please give your name, order, or address. If you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from. Please be respectful of us, we'll be respectful of you, and thank you for participating. All right. City Administrator Spiegel is entering updates for this evening.
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Very good. So we have six public hearings this evening, one under community development, four in public works, and one under finance. So we'll start the public hearings in community development with Alderman Gripp and Alderwoman Lee. Alderman Gripp, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I open the public hearing for case REZ 21-02, being the request of Belser Ventures LLC for a zoning map amendment to rezone 1320 West Kimberly Road, containing 5.37 acres, more or less, from C2 Corridor Commercial to C3 Commercial District to allow heavy retail of commercial electronic components. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this public hearing? Please step to the lectern, state your name and address or ward, please.
Mayor, council, thank you. My name is Tom Pasternak. I'm the attorney for the landowner, the landlord, Belser Ventures. And this request is basically that the landlord would like to have a tenant in the building, and the good news is that they have a tenant. The bad news is that unfortunately, we have to rezone to accommodate the tenant. So the issue here is that basically, as I understand how the new code works, is if you basically house and sell inventory outside the premises, okay, that falls outside C2, which is what the current property is now. So we have to go to a more intense use, a heavy retail use, which is C3. And the basis for why the tenant has to do that basically is for one reason and almost one reason alone, which is he sells generators as a part of his business. And generators in and of themselves cannot be housed within the premises. They have to be outside the premises. So what we're indicating here by bringing the landlord forward is I would like to say that despite the fact that C3 is normally a more intense use, in fact, you'll find, as you talk to the tenant, that he is just a typical retailer, actually more than a typical retailer, but not as an intense retailer like the old K's might have been or like a merchandiser. So with that in mind, I think what's really important is to understand the basis of who's going in, how they're going in, and how he's accommodating, and how he will not really impact the neighborhood, but enhance the neighborhood. So with that, I'd like to introduce the proposed tenant, Mr. Armstrong. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ralph Armstrong, and I am the Location Manager for 3E Electrical Engineering and Equipment. We are located currently 206 East Fifth Street in Davenport. And we've been here in the community since the mid-'90s at that location. And the reason we're here in a nutshell is we've really outgrown it. We currently have to lease three facilities in order to run our business. It's very important for us to stay in Davenport and to stay in Iowa. 3E is a 100-year-old Iowa company. We were purchased recently by another private company, so we're privately held, and we want to be part of the community and stay part of the community. We are, although it sounds like we're intensive when going from C2 to C3, the reality is we're really not. We're primarily delivering most of our products, although we do have customers come into the retail sales area. That's usually 20 to 25 people per day. So that's considerably less than you would have with a typical retailer who's trying to get a lot of street and foot traffic. That's not really our type of business. We do a lot of business-to-business, and one of our selling features is we deliver. So we have delivery trucks that go all throughout the Quad Cities area, both sides of the river, daily. So the reason that we are here is because we do need to keep the generators outside for safety reasons, they can't be inside the building. Otherwise, my understanding is we would really fit well in that area as is. Have any questions or anything I can answer for you?
So this is the public hearing?
Okay.
So we won't dialogue at this point?
Okay.
Later on in the agenda, if anyone from the council has questions, we can bring you back up to answer those.
Perfect. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing. There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? This public hearing is closed, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. The next area is public works. Alderman Dunn and Alderman Dorman will lead those public hearings. Alderman Dunn, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I open the first public hearing on the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the Johnson Avenue reconstruction Fairmount to Gaiman project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. I open the second public hearing on the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the West 54th Street reconstruction Davida Howell project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. I open the third public hearing on the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the CD BG replenishment Group One Hoover Road, Appomattox Road, and North Brooklyn Street project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. And I open the fourth public hearing on the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the FY 2022 sanitary sewer lateral repair program. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed, and back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. Last area is finance. We have one public hearing. Alderman Condon will lead that. Alderman Condon.
Thank you, Your Honor. I open the public hearing to amend the fiscal year 2021 operating and capital improvement budgets. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I close the public hearing.
Thank you. All right, good for public hearings. Next area, petitions and communications for members. So I'll just start, I'm going to start having what I'm, lack of a better word, mayor listening sessions around the city. Wanted to do it some last year, I drove around and talked to people that I'd find just sitting, but now I'm going to have them in formal locations. So every month I'll have one. I anticipate our good city administrator will join me in the listening session. So the first one will be for June, Eastern Library. Then we'll have one in July at the Roosevelt Center, and I'll put them in different parts of the city. And just people come, tell me what I don't know, tell me what you need to, give me your thoughts about, and for about an hour, I'll sit and listen to what people have to say. So just passing that word, you'll see more on that as we go. So let's see what we have. Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. One is, people say that sometimes there isn't much to do. I just attended the evening with Renee Elise Goldsberry down in the park with the Quad City Symphony Orchestra. It was a wonderful concert. It was outdoors. And if you don't know who Renee Elise Goldsberry is, she was in Hamilton. So she was here in Davenport, down at the riverfront. And I just want to say that we have a gem with the Quad City Symphony Orchestra and our maestro, Mark Russell Smith. So if you have a chance to attend anything with our symphony, I really encourage it. We'll have pops in the park in the fall. There's other things that happen, they don't have to be the full symphony, but they're really worth attending, so I just want to encourage you to do that. And the second thing I wanted to talk about is today I attended some training, both by Zoom and on-site, that was offered by the Partnership of Scott County Watersheds. And we had some experts from the Corps of Engineers, from the city, Amy Kay, from Nahant Marsh, that, as well as, one person came from as far as Omaha to attend this training. And it had to do with streamside restoration and rehab, and some of the things that we've been doing in the city, public works through Amy Kay, some cutting-edge stuff actually being done here in the city. But since we're looking at the riverfront resiliency and, you know, the flood study, I would really recommend that you watch perhaps the first hour of the discussion on Zoom. It was recorded today. Because even though he was talking about streams, many of the things apply to bigger watersheds and rivers like the Mississippi River. That has to do with channeling, if you channel water, take it out of the floodplain, how it reacts downstream and how it even reacts upstream. There's a lot of good things in there that you might want to take some time and go to the Partnership of Scott County Watersheds and watch at least the first hour of that, and think about how those concepts might apply to a bigger system like the Mississippi River as you fill out your survey for that. So anyway, lots of good things happening in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee. Alderman Dorman.
I'm sorry.
Alderwoman Dickman.
Thank you. Just a quick reminder about my ward meeting tomorrow at 6:00 PM, second ward meeting. Going to be covering some topics with parks, what's going on in the city, and also a quick review of any ways to get involved if anyone is interested in taking advantage of the COVID declining, COVID rates declining to get more involved in your local government. So hopefully see some of you tomorrow.
Thank you, Alderwoman Dickman. Alderman Gripp.
Thank you, Your Honor. Alderwoman Lee, I appreciate your comments and bringing to light a lot of the positive stuff that we have going on in Davenport. And I want to continue with that trend and celebrate what I consider a win, draw your attention to Urbane 210, which is the housing project at 210 East Second Street, which is the property on the south side of the River Center that we, the city council, sold last year and they're developing. Well, the project is nearing completion, and it looks like they're starting to drum up tenants. And I want to read to you what their first selling point was. So, "Did you know we're located in the heart of downtown Davenport and have a walking score of 74? We are within walking distance of so many great local restaurants, coffee shops, gift shops, breweries, activities, and trails. Stay tuned as we share more about our neighborhood and all it has to offer in a Get to Know Your Neighborhood series." So the two things I would draw your attention to is that walkability is a selling point with residents and people, and that's not just in the downtown, that is throughout the city as well. So when we get redevelopments that offer that, we need to recognize that it is an amenity, and it is something that people want. And the second thing is that they referred to downtown Davenport as a neighborhood several times, and 20 years ago, that was not the case. And now, I think we have over 3,500, but I know we have at least 3,000 downtown residents, and it is truly a neighborhood, and it does have a lot to offer. So I just felt that this was a positive, that we needed to recognize and celebrate because we don't do enough celebrating of the good stuff within the city. And so, looking forward to Urbane 210 opening here this year. Thanks, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Anyone else? Okay, so I have an alibi, I apologize. I said for June, it's Thursday the 3rd of June for the first listening session, and then this Saturday, a couple of folks I know are putting together what they call a Davenport Peace Group, and it's a Stand Against Gun Violence. So this Saturday, and they'll do one each month in different parks. This one's at Harrington Park at noon. So it's a little, a group of gentlemen are coming together to say, "Stand with us and stand for peace." So I'd encourage you, if you're around, to get involved, and the intent is really good. So thank you for that. All right, moving on then, if there's nobody else, we'll go to our respective four areas of discussion. The first area is community development. Alderman Gripp and Alderwoman Lee will lead that discussion. Alderman Gripp, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have three items on community development this evening. Item number one is a second consideration, ordinance for case ORD 21-01, amending various sections of Chapter 17 of the municipal code of Davenport, Iowa, entitled zoning. Is there anyone from the public who's here to comment on this item? Is anyone from the council care to comment on this item? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Item number two is a first consideration, ordinance for case REZ 21-02, being the request of Belser Ventures LLC for a zoning map amendment to rezone 1320 West Kimberly Road, containing 5.37 acres, more or less, from C2 Corridor Commercial to C3 General Commercial District to allow heavy retail of commercial electronic components. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Any council, any comments from the council? Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you. I would love to speak to Mr. Armstrong, if I could, and answer a couple of questions. Thank you, sir.
Yes, you're welcome.
So yes, you have a long history, you know, in this area, and I'm sorry you're moving out of third ward, but that's okay, if it's helpful for your business. So you said you had other facilities, are they, where are they located, sir?
So we leased one facility literally across the street from our business, and then we leased a third facility in Myland, Illinois, actually.
Okay.
So we actually had to cross the river to find a suitable property.
Right.
So we're very excited with the possibility of getting into one.
Got it, okay. And sort of, what's, when you talk about generators, it seems to be the sticking point here, or the reason for the rezoning. What size are they? How many do you store at a time?
Great question, so.
What's the footprint of, what does it look like?
So we are a cooler distributor, we're a cool distributor for the state 3E, for the state of Iowa, Nebraska, and South Dakota, and we have 21 counties in Illinois. So the generators in question are rental generators. Those are the generators that are used if there's going to be a planned outage, like they're going to be doing work on a building, or in the case of emergency, like our Duratio situation, where critical buildings such as nursing homes and things like that, that their generator's not working or they don't have one. So I believe there's five that we have. The reason we can't store in the building is because they're kept full of fuel at all times.
Right.
So that we get calls in the middle of the night to go out and service somebody who's lost power.
Right. So, and I would assume then that they're fairly expensive things, so.
They are.
Are you planning, can you do an enclosure or something that is, you know, that where they're secure and perhaps not as visible?
So that's the idea, and that's why we're here, is a 50 by 50 enclosure, and that's what that's for.
Okay, okay, all right. And you're, because I know this area was sensitive about, at one point, there was a, you know, a trucking thing wanting to go there, and that was years ago. So what size of trucks come?
Great question. Great question. So all of our trucks are what you would call a straight truck. So if you're familiar with like Penske or Ryder, that's a style of trucks that we use. The deliveries that we get are a mix. There'll be straight trucks and there'll also be semis. We've tracked it, and we average about five deliveries a day. Now, two of those are UPS and FedEx, which are probably already servicing that complex. Those are typically straight trucks. I know you guys have seen those. Then we would get semis from what they call less-than-truckload carriers. Some of those may already be going to the site, some may not, because there's not really that many in our community. Our delivery window is pretty tight because we don't have the manpower to just wait around all day for that. So we try to keep that between until 3 o'clock. Usually starts about 9:00, because a lot of these LTLs aren't in Davenport anymore, they're coming in from Cedar Rapids or Peoria. So not a lot of, I don't feel we're going to add a lot of delivery traffic.
Okay. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Alderwoman Dickman.
Hi, thank you for coming up and answering questions.
You're welcome.
This might actually be a little bit more of a staff question, if you want to have a little break.
Sure.
Just, don't want to hold you.
You want to go to dial there, if you're.
But I was curious about with the rezoning, if we do have neighbors come forward and say, "Oh, this is going to destroy the universe," or whatnot, if we could put conditions on there just to make sure, because rezoning is kind of forever, you know, if we could have other conditions in case, on the hopefully not chant, you know, the chance that they, you know, something goes awry with this business, we're not stuck with a C3 somewhere we don't want it. Sure. Laura Berkeley Development Planning. There is one condition on there now to add the fencing to create the buffer that is now required as part of our code between residential and commercial. So that is one of the conditions that is currently recommended by the Plan of Zone Commission. Also, the, a lot of the uses that would be of great concern related to nuisances are only by special use permit in this district. So they would get another level of review through the zoning board of adjustment, and where additional conditions could be placed as well, depending on the use. As always, it is an option of the city council to add additional conditions to rezoning.
Okay, yeah, I mean, it sounds like this shouldn't be a problem, but if staff can just make sure that there's nothing that would get skipped in the permit process or whatnot, we don't want to end up saying whoops later.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Mattson.
Yes, so sir, so I appreciate Alderman McGinnis's question about trucks, because that was my ward, and I go by there four times a day. So I know the people, and they so far are understanding what you're doing. I appreciate your, about the trucks, because that was the concern, nice neighborhood trucks. So three, four trucks a day, that's pretty good. And if I read you right, just to confirm, you're not an evening.
Oh, no. We, we close at 4:00, and we're not open on the weekends, so we are.
Wish you the best, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I don't, I don't have any questions for you, Mr. Armstrong.
Thank you.
I was going to make some comments.
Oh, thank you.
So as Mayor Mattson alluded to, this project is in the seventh ward, and so when, shortly before the neighborhood meeting is when former Alderman Peacock had announced his resignation. So he had asked Alderman Condon and I to step in and attend the neighborhood meetings and field any questions or concerns. So when Alderman Condon and I went to the neighborhood meeting, of course, the number one concern was how many trucks are you going to have on this property? And Mr. Armstrong was able to answer that question and put the neighbors at ease. I have not received any further objections from any of the neighbors. The two biggest things were, or three biggest things, number of trucks, hours of operation, and then the third was, what is the outdoor storage going to look like? And I think, you know, not a lot of trucks are being added here. Hours of operation are good, normal business hours, and then I think we'll work through the fencing, and they had it all taped off when we had the neighborhood meeting, so the neighbors could go out there, see exactly where it was, told them what it would look like. And so I think this is on good grounds with the neighbors, and we'll see, but I don't foresee anyone coming forward on this. But I did want to thank Mr. Armstrong for his commitment to staying in Davenport. This is a business retention issue, and we hate to see anyone leave our downtown, but also, we do understand that your building will be highly sought after, and redevelopment will happen pretty quickly in it. So seeing no other questions, we'll move on to the next item. Item number three is a resolution placing a moratorium upon establishing car washes, enclosed and outdoor self-storage facilities, and vehicle dealerships with outdoor display in the area bound by Brady Street, Kimberly Road, Northwest Boulevard, and 46th Street until November 27th, 2021. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Alderwoman McGinnis.
If we could have staff talk a little bit about where this arises from, I think it would be interesting for the public, in terms of looking at the future.
Sure. So part of this discussion is in how we want that corridor to redevelop, and I know that Administrator Spiegel had talked to you, and part of her work plan is looking into the idea of possibly in the future, looking at reinvestment district, and looking through what that process looks like and what kind of projects are eligible. It's pretty clear that we need to be careful on uses in that area. They have to be high investment, high sales tax uses. So we did a quick review of some of the uses in our code, and those ones stood out as ones that would be obstacles into having a successful reinvestment district. It's not solely just for the reinvestment district, it would be for really any kind of revitalization opportunity in that area.
Anyone else from the council? I would just like to say, I'm supportive of this, and I want to thank City Administrator Spiegel for being proactive on this. I know that malls across the country are facing this, the issue of maybe disinvestment or retail is going a different way to either online or a different model, and so cities across the country are trying to figure out what we're going to do with large mall properties. And I know that she's been engaged with the property owner, and this is a step in making sure that we can do this thoughtfully and strategically. So I support it. And thank you for being proactive. You want, Mayor Mattson?
I just want to echo exactly what you said. Thank you for taking this on. One of the biggest things we got going is that area in the future, and prior planning is wonderful. So, thank you.
All right. I would ask Alderwoman Lee to please set our agenda.
Thank you very much. Chair Gripp, I move that item one and item two be put on the discussion agenda, and item three on the consent agenda.
All right, there's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That concludes community development this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp and Alderwoman Lee. The next area, public safety. Alderman Jobchin and Alderwoman Dickman will lead that. Alderman Jobchin, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have four items under public safety this evening. Item number one, first consideration ordinance amending subsection 9.40.030D of the Davenport Municipal Code, providing penalties for fireworks violations. Please note, staff recommends suspension of the rules and passage of second and third considerations. Anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? Please step to the podium, state your name, address or ward, please.
Yes, my name is Joseph Charlton. I live at Fourth Ward. I'm getting tired of everything, they're shooting off some fireworks before the Fourth of July comes up. They should, penalty and stuff like that, they should find them really high penalty. And also, they shoot them off after one, when it's over with, they keep on doing about 2:00 and then 3:00 in the morning. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from public wishing to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Alderman Dorman.
Thank you, Alderman Jobchin. Tom or Cory, could you, one of you guys first maybe just explain what's happening here, and then additionally, then go on to talk about how we're trying to address fireworks this summer?
I'll take the first half of that.
I'll take the first half of that.[632.66][632.66](laughter) What's going on is that in order for our people in the field to write these tickets quicker through the electronic filing system, we have to do what's called a scheduled violation. Well, scheduled violation means there's set fines. So instead of saying up to 100, it says the fine's 100. In this case, we already did that, but for some reason, the state would not recognize it as a scheduled violation, unless we use the word, words, scheduled violation. So this is just putting the word scheduled violation into the ordinance.
And then from an enforcement standpoint, we've talked many times over the past couple summers about being strategic. So there is a, a large cross-departmental team, both city hall staff, but police, fire, and neighborhood services that is looking at strategic enforcement. The communications team is working with fire on a citywide mailer to remind people when legal discharge hours are, and what the rules are, and what it means to be a good neighbor, and promoting red, white, and boom also, because we think that's a good safe alternative that we have it back this year. And that will go out in addition to a few scheduled enforcements, which the dates we will not tell you, because that ruins the surprise.
Thanks, Corey and Tom. And I'll just say real quick that I feel like if tomorrow was to be my last day on council, I feel like I would be known as the firework guy, because I do love fireworks and I like to see them. But I also know that with great powder comes great responsibility, and so far, not all of Davenport has shown that they are the, the most responsible when it comes to shooting off fireworks legally during the designated time period. And so I hope with this change to our ordinance, as well as the upped enforcement that we have, that Ms. Spiegel just spoke about, that we'll see legal firework use this summer, where we can all still have fun, enjoy 4th of July, my favorite holiday, but still do it responsibly and respect our neighbors. So reminder going into the summer, and also explanation here of this change. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Doorman. Alderwoman Lee?
Thank you. I just want to say thank you for moving forward on this and getting it clear, because I would say, short of water issues, the fireworks issues are probably one of the most frantic calls I get as a ward. And there's even fireworks going on now, small stuff. So thank you for moving forward, thank you for clarifying it. It's a tough job for the police department to actually be able to catch somebody firing one off to where they can actually make it a violation. And I would, I would hope as part of your strategy that you're working on, that maybe there can be a situation where you've got a group of people who may not be sworn officers, but that do have the ability to go out and do some kind of ticketing for violations, so that we can cover more of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee. Mayor Mattson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As I've said for years now, and I'll continue, and we've went through the warning phases and the let-you-know phases, so I would advocate to our public safety folks that do this job, no warnings, no, we're past that. Get after it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alderman Ambrose?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As we move forward with this, you know, I think it's important that we find out some way that the good neighbors can assist in enforcement, targeting the bad neighbors, beyond making it a citizen's arrest. And I'm sure there's a lot of neighbors that if they knew they had the green light, they would make a citizen's arrest after the abuse of the fireworks. So as you plan this information, you know, whether a neighbor can videotape the activity and have it stand up in court, I think that's important information. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. This item will move on. Now on to item number two, resolution approving street, lane, or public ground closures on the listed dates, times to hold outdoor events. I will read all these items, then ask for public and council comment. Jennifer Beecher, end of school, neighborhood block party, 4,600 block of Amesbury Drive, Friday, June 4, 2021, 4:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Closure, Amesbury Drive between East 48th Street and Crow Creek Road. Next, St. Paul the Apostle Catholic Church, celebrate St. Paul, 916 East Rush Home Street, Saturday, June 12, 2021, 12:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Closure, East Rush Home Street between Cary Avenue and Arlington Avenue. Next, Corn Belt Running Club, Bixit Six Training Runs, Thursday, June 24, 2021, 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Thursday, July 1, 2021, 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. And Thursday, July 8, 2019, or 2021, 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Closure, East 4th Street from Pershing Avenue to Rider Drive, Pershing Avenue from East 4th Street to Kirkwood Boulevard, Kirkwood Boulevard from Pershing Avenue to Jersey Ridge Road, Jersey Ridge Road from Kirkwood Boulevard to Middle Road, McLoughlin Boulevard from Middle Road to River Drive. Next, St. Anthony Catholic Church, 417 North Main Street, Sunday, September 12, 2021, 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Closure, Main Street between 4th Street and 5th Street. Anyone from public wishing to comment on these items? Anyone from council? This item will move on. On to item number three. Again, I will read all these items before asking for public or council comment. First, Riverfront Improvement Commission, Music on the River, Peterson Pavilion, Leclerc Park, 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., unless otherwise noted, on various dates, June 2021 through August 2021, outdoor music over 50 dB. Next, City of Davenport Parks and Recreation Party in the Park, all events are 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. on the following Thursdays, July 8, 2021, Lafayette Park, July 22, 2021, Garfield Park, July 29, 2021, Glen Armel Park, August 12, 2021, Van Veren Park, August 19, 2021, Northwest Park, September 16, 2021, Goose Creek Park, and September 23, 2021, Junkie Park, outdoor music over 50 dB. And I think whichever staff left me that little synopsis there. And then next, Front Street Brewery, Luau at the Freight House, 421 West River Drive, Saturday, July 10, 2021, 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., outdoor music over 50 dB. And lastly, St. Anthony Catholic Church, 417 North Main Street, Sunday, September 12, 2021, 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., outdoor music over 50 dB. Anyone from public wishing to comment on these items? And from council, Alderman Condon?
Wanted to single out one event on here, Music on the River, down in Leclerc Park. I wanted to invite the public to join me and my family. We're there every year, and we personally missed that event quite a bit last year. And I think you'd surprise yourself, I used to give Steve Aaron some, a hard time about the music that was programmed down there, but in a year's absence, I found myself missing that Dixie jazz and classical music that I found myself listening to down at the park. So it's a great event that you may not have on your radar right now, and I encourage you to bring your family, and I'll meet you there with mine.
Thank you. This item will move on. On to the last item, number four, motion approving beer and liquor license. I will read the two new liquor licenses, and the renewals are listed here for review. First new license, new owner, temporary permit, temporary outdoor area location transfer, RME Courtyard, River Music Experience, Main Street between River Drive and 2nd Street, temporary location transfer, June 8, June 9, 2021, QCCT donor reception, license type, Class C liquor. And New Ground Theater, 2113 East 11th Street, license type, Class C liquor. Anyone from public wishing to comment on these items? Council? Item will move on. I'll ask Alderwoman Dickman to please set the agenda.
I move that Item 1 be placed on discussion and voted for second and third considerations, and all other items be placed on consent.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Thank you, Alderman Jobchin and Alderwoman Dickman. Next area is Public Works. Alderman Dunn and Alderman Doorman will lead that discussion. Alderman Dunn, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have eight items this evening for Public Works. Item number one is a resolution approving the planned specification form of contract and estimated cost for the Johnson Avenue reconstruction Fairmount to Gammon project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number two is a resolution approving the planned specification form of contract and estimated cost for the West 54th Street reconstruction Davy de Hall project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number three is a resolution approving the planned specification form of contract and estimated cost for the CDBG replenishment group one Hoover Road, Abtmax Road, and North Berkeley Street project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number four is a resolution approving the planned specification form of contract and estimated cost for the FY 2022 sanitary sewer lateral repair program. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number five is a resolution awarding the contract for the Marquette Street and West 12th Street replacement projects to CDMI Concrete Contractors of Port Fire in Illinois in the amount of $1,658,802.80. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Alderwoman Lee?
Thank you. I, I just have a question that's been raised to me. Let's see, for the Marquette and West 12th Street replacement, will there be a bike trail on that, do you know? Does anybody know?
No.
No. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number six is a resolution approving a purchase agreement with Phelps Family LLC in the amount of $50,050 for the acquisition and land necessary for the Goose Creek Trail project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number seven is a resolution awarding the contract for the Sunday Brook Park Bridge over Blackhawk Creek replacement project to General Contractors Incorporated of Bettendorf, Iowa in the amount of $252,871.80. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. And our final item is a motion approving a waiver, temporary deferral of sidewalk installation for proposed warehouse in this recent facility at 2022 Research Parkway. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. And Alderman Doorman, would you set the agenda for us, please?
I move to place all items on the consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, and that will conclude Public Works, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Doorman and Alderman Dunn. The last area is Finance, and Alderman Condon will lead that with the assistance of someone. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have five items on Finance this evening. The first item is a resolution appointing Joseph Miller to fill the 7th Ward Alderman vacancy until the winner of this fall's regular city election is determined and sworn in. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Anyone from council? Alderman Ambrose?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have the gentleman out in the audience, would you stand up, please, and take a bow? All right.[1451.11][1451.11](applause)
Alderman Gripp?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to, you know, commend the mayor for the, the approach that he took on this. I know when Alderman Peacock announced his resignation, we, we talked about the appropriate way to, to handle it, and I know we asked input from a lot of folks on the council, and some of us now have been through this three times in the last five years, and we've seen it play out both ways, where we've done a special election and when we've done an appointment, I, I tend to think that the appointment is the right way to go, and that we're doing the right thing here for the community. And then we found a, a community member who was willing to step up and serve the community. I don't think there's a higher honor than, than being an Alderman in Davenport. But also, we, we have a great need for someone to serve the 7th Ward until the election in November, and I appreciate your willingness to step up and, and serve your community. And I look forward to working with you if, you know, if the account, if the council decides to do that next week. No, I guess that's it, because I forgot what else I was going to say. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted again to say, Mr. Miller, thank you again for your willingness to help us out in your time, and appreciate all the conversations we've had. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Miller. Item number two is a resolution amending the fiscal year 2021 operating and capital improvement budgets. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? From council, Alderwoman Lee?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to thank Director Merritt and Clay Merritt for addressing my questions and then sending them out to everyone, so that you could see my thought process, and they're excellent answers, and I have no issues. So thank you very much.
No one else? Item number three is a resolution approving the purchase of three full-size SUVs for the fire department from Strever's Ford of Waki, Iowa, in the amount of $107,631. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Item number four is a resolution approving the purchase of a van for the police department and two pickup trucks from the sewer division in the amount of $139,812.50 from Stu Hanson's Dodge City of Des Moines, Iowa, using a state contract. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? And item number five is a motion directing, directing the completion of various parks projects in the fiscal year 2022 park development program in the amount of $350,000. Anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? And finally, we have listed below for you purchases from $10,000 to $50,000. We don't read each of those out loud, but they're listed there for your knowledge. Alderman Doorman, the honor is yours. Thank you, Alderman Condon. I move to place all items on the consent agenda.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
That concludes Finance, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Condon and Alderman Doorman. The next area is other ordinances, resolutions, and motions. There are none for this evening. The next area is public with business, so any public that has any issue to discuss with the council, other than agenda items, please come to the podium, the microphone's above you. You'll have five minutes. Please give your name, order, or address. If you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from. Thank you.
My name is Willie Short, I live at 501 West Third. Yesterday, I had to call the police because this old guy is coming to my apartment now, and he's knocking on my door, bam, and I have him on camera doing this. And I also want to address, in November, I'm going to run for city council member, because the simple fact is, I feel that you guys are not listening to the people. And I have another thing, I was hoping that the chief of police would be here. I wanted to let the chief of police know, when I was out there in, in front of the building, calling out the mayor, I'm going to continue to keep doing this to the city council and the mayor until someone listens to, understanding what I'm saying. There was 10 policemen that came out there, and I got them on my phone, staring at me from across the street. I just want to let y'all know, I have people on this end and people on this end watching me 24/24 when I'm over here, because the simple fact is, everybody want to make us in that building look like we the bad guy, when we've been complaining about this. So therefore, I would be here starting tomorrow, I would have 15 protesters with me, I have people bagging me now, because the simple fact is, they see me coming, and no one's listening. So I want you guys to understand, I would be out in front of your office every single day. Wherever you are, I'm coming, I'm blasting you out, because the simple fact is, there's no way us in this building over here have to live this way, and have to take this abuse from people, and not be able to put our hands on them because they're old. This's got to stop, and I'm not going to stop until I make that point. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Any reports? Seeing no one else, any reports, Ms. Spiegel? No? Motion and a second. All in favor to adjourn? Thank you very much.